My on this computer here instead of, don't worry about it, I'll take care of it here. Welcome to the I Love Seville Show. We're having some camera alignment here. I'll go with this camera JDubs instead of the traditional one-shot. Viewers and listeners, a lot we're going to talk about on the program today, including embattled school board member Allison Spillman, who is at the point right now where we need to have a very frank conversation. Does this embattled school board member need to resign? Her statements comparing a student organization or linking a student organization to the Ku Klux Klan, not just dangerous, but now has led to a statement issued by the superintendent Matthew Haas. I'm not sure if we're live. We are live on LinkedIn, fantastic. We'll talk about that today on the program. We'll talk about the statement for Matthew Haas. We'll ask you, the viewer and listener, does Allison Spillman, does the school board need to issue a statement that distance itself from Spillman? I mean, are we now at the point where the school board needs to issue a statement to distance the outfit, the organization, the school board away from the at-large member Allison Spillman? I want to talk about that today. I also am going to put a face to the $6.2 million purchase. News we broke yesterday on the I Love Seville Network. City of Charlottesville, $6,200,000 purchase that now needs the blessing of city council on Monday night. It's not just going to be $6.2 million, the purchase, but there's going to be additional money needed to outfit and outfit the building. It's a sizable structure and a nice little piece of property. 27,000 square foot brick building. It's next to the Days Inn and the Country Inn Suites on Emmett Street. I highlighted it was next to Whole Foods. You can see it from the bypass, 2,000 Holiday Drive. 27,000 square foot office building, 3.8 acres. Fantastic spot for this, ladies and gentlemen. I don't want to hear outrage from the Gilligan gang. I don't want to hear outrage from the activists in this community who are leveraging the homeless to extort, influence, and clout, and manipulate council and local government. They are essentially leveraging the houseless population, which is somewhere between 200 and 240 people. Less than 250 people in this population. And the Gilligan gang and activists in this community are leveraging this population, extorting this population in some ways, to try to manipulate and control council and local government to establish clout and influence for their organization. And they're using dog whistles. They're using social media and digital organization. And they're utilizing fear tactics to try to spook and scare many of us in this city. But there are movers and shakers locally who have solved the problem for a hand up for this houseless population. And we're going to tell you when, we're going to tell you where, we're going to tell you how, and we're going to break this down in very layman terms, seventh grade terminology for all of us to understand what's going on here. A lot we're going to cover on the broadcast. You got the University of Virginia in Louisville on Saturday. It's a 3:30 kickoff. You win this game, you're UVA. You may have a chance to run the table, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not saying it's going to happen. But ESPN, if you look at the rest of the schedule, ESPN says that UVA is favored to win the rest of their games on this schedule. A lot to talk about on the broadcast. We'll give love to Charlottesville Sanitary Supply. 61 consecutive years of business, Judah, Charlottesville Sanitary Supply. Located on High Street, online at charlottesvillesanitariesupply.com. The Vermillion family is five generations strong in Almaral County. And the Vermillion family has owned Charlottesville Sanitary Supply for three of those five generations. Owned for three generations, Charlottesville Sanitary Supply. They're the founders of the business. Vacuums, pool robots, cleaning equipment for your swimming pool, water testing for your swimming pool, any sanitary supply need you may have. Free local delivery. Why would you shop for sanitary needs at any other place besides Charlottesville Sanitary Supply? They're literally doing free local day-of delivery. Amazon, Walmart, they will not deliver the product to you faster than what Charlottesville Sanitary Supply is doing. And you're helping a local 61-year-old company. I mean, goodness gracious, the Vermillions have got it figured out. So much to cover on the broadcast. I think the lead's got to be Spillman. You give me a thumbs up. Do we have those slides ready to rock and roll on the homeless shelter?
Just about.
Okay, fantastic. I would like, if you could, to go to the studio camera and then weave us in on a two-shot. When you're ready, give me a heads up. I can monologue at first. That way you have time to get those slides so I can show the community where this houseless shelter is potentially going to go. It does need council approval on Monday night. Five people will determine whether to greenlight a purchase for a low-barrier shelter and a campus for 200 to 240 people experiencing homelessness. If Juan Diego Wade and Brian Pinkston and Lloyd Snook and Michael Payne and Natalie Oshren do not approve this $6.2 million purchase and the corresponding dollars to outfit and outfit this building, then they should forever be shamed in this community. Forever be shamed. Because this is a premium location. This is in the heartbeat of the city. This is next to the Rivanna Trail. This is next to the bypass, next to public transportation, relatively near the downtown mall, but not in the business district. If for some reason these activists outrage, influence council, and they don't greenlight this, I'm going to be forever disappointed in Juan Wade and his team. And I hope he hears this. I know he listens to the show. The lead's got to be Spillman. We now have a superintendent statement from Dr. Matthew Haas. And Dr. Matthew Haas, who issued the statement literally today, this statement's been sent to me, goodness gracious, by, I don't know, three dozen people in our community since Haas released the statement. I see Almaral County, I see Almaral County Public Schools watching the program right now. I'll read a couple of paragraphs from this statement from the superintendent. This statement is absolute word salad. And it's been co-signed by Kada Cuff, the school board chair, and by school board vice chair Rebecca Berlin. Dear members of Almaral County Public School Community, I'm reading verbatim from this statement, folks. Over the past several days, our community has been deeply engaged in conversations around issues that matter greatly to many of you. Hundreds of families, students, employees, and community members have reached out by email, phone, and social media to share perspectives. We value this engagement and the civil discourse it represents. And all that we've read, heard, and responded to, the consistent messages care for our students. We also recognize that these discussions have left many feeling angry, frustrated, invalidated, while others feel supported. In moments like this, it is essential to remember what unites us, our commitment to the safety, well-being, and success of every student in Almaral County Public Schools. Our mission and vision to prepare all students to thrive as lifelong learners, contributors, and leaders cannot be realized without strong partnerships with families and the broader community. This is, that is why we reaffirm our responsibility to uphold equal access and non-discrimination policies, maintain a safe and respectful environment, foster inclusive schools. We also want to clarify some facts about this matter. Student organizations at our high schools are permitted to invite guest speakers during their meetings. Western Almaral High School clubs have previously hosted speakers on a range of topics during the lunch period without incident. After review, the principal determined that the Turning Point USA Club at Western Almaral High School may proceed with its planned speaker on gender during a regular lunchtime meeting, provided the event remains orderly. Participation in student clubs is voluntary. This statement from Matthew Haas, the superintendent, from Kada Cuff, the school board chair, and from Rebecca Berlin, the school board vice chair, is word salad. It is the definition of using fancy words and word salad to try to mumbo jumbo the narrative. Never in this statement does Matthew Haas, the school board chair, the vice school board chair, try to offer words like this. You ready? Allison Spillman was wrong for comparing a student organization at Western Almaral High School to the Ku Klux Klan. Never in this statement, that's word salad, did the superintendent, the school board chair, the vice chair say this. We, the superintendent, and our team of lieutenants, we, the school board of Almaral County, do not stand with Allison Spillman and her word choice that linked a student organization at Western Almaral High School to the Ku Klux Klan. I'm trying to teach our seven-year-old, my wife and I are trying to teach our seven-year-old and our soon-to-be three-year-old the significance of the words "I am sorry." It's so hard for our seven-year-old and our three-year-old to say the words "I am sorry." They make mistakes all the time. They're little boys, they're trying to figure out life. It's to be expected. We try to utilize those mistakes as teaching moments where we then sit them aside and like, "Look, son, you're seven. If you hit your brother who's three, you can really hurt him. Please say 'I'm sorry' to your brother." Or our three-year-old, "Son, you're three. You can't grab the tail of Max, the family German shepherd, because that will really hurt him. Say 'I'm sorry.'" But our boys understand when they do wrong, the next thing that's expected from them is those words. Contrition, apology. Because it shows a level of maturation. It shows a level of internal retrospect consideration. The superintendent of the school, the chair of the school board, the vice chair of the school board have done nothing to alleviate the fire and outrage that Almaral County, our community, should be feeling now when an elected official utilizes her platform. And she's trying to marginalize the platform she's using. She's like, "Oh, this was a private post on my personal Facebook page. What I do on my personal Facebook page is not the community's business." I call bullshit on that. When you're an elected official and you're talking about a school in the district where you're one of seven people that serve on the board that determine the budget and the leadership and the policy and the direction of the school system in totality, and you reference the school's name, Western Almaral High School, a student organization, you reference events that are happening at the school, and you reference the Ku Klux Klan and compare a school to the KKK? I don't care if it's on your personal Facebook page. I don't care if you're having a conversation at the line at Boto's. I don't care if you're having a conversation over a martini at Duner's or at Vuvachi. I don't care if you're having a conversation while walking the grocery store line at Wegmans. You are representing Almaral County Public Schools in any capacity that you're communicating in, that you're, the clothes you're wearing, anything. That's what comes with being an elected official. And what Spillman has done I mean, she's using racist dog whistles to what she says stand up for a trans student population. She's the mother of a gender transitioning student and youngster. When you represent a school board as a school board member, your first priority is to represent the students across the board. All the students. Not small pockets of students, but all the students, macro. Not small pockets, micro. And when it's all said and done, I don't think the world cares necessarily if one student is gender transitioning. I don't. That's your prerogative. That's something that you do in conjunction with your parents, with your family. I don't care if you choose to do it. But the community does care if its elected officials and its leadership put a student group in harm's way by linking them to the Ku Klux Klan because you've created this, "I'm on this side of the fence or this side of the fence, and my side's the right side and that side's the wrong side. So come join me or feel these harmful words." And for Haas to issue the statement he did, the school board chair to issue the statement she did, and the vice chair of the school board to issue the statement, all co-sign this word salad statement that doesn't say Allison Spillman is wrong, Allison Spillman shouldn't have used this word choice, Allison Spillman doesn't speak for Almaral County Public Schools. She's offering this commentary on her Facebook page as her own prerogative. It's not in any indication tied to us. To not do that shows that they don't understand the significance of what is happening right now. Studio camera two-shot. Judah Wickhauer, multiple headlines that we need to rotate in, including should Allison Spillman resign from the school board right now? Does the Almaral County School Board now have to issue a real statement that's not word salad, that says, "We don't stand with the comments made by our colleague Spillman"? Matthew Haas, does he need to do it?
He's never going to do that.
And does this collateral damage start stinking? This stink start sticking to other people?
I certainly hope not. This reminds me of something that I was taught by a friend who was explaining what's called othering. I may have brought this up before, but I see this as not just, not just othering. And for those who want to know the definition, it's essentially pointing at another group and saying, "They are different than us. They are other than us." And it dehumanizes them and it makes them easier to think of in the abstract. And this is not just that. This goes sadly much further. When you point at another group and say, "They're not like us," and then you make them equivalent to something like the KKK or Nazis or whatever, you're essentially telling anyone who's aligned with your views that those people are not, they don't have the same worth as we do. And that's what really troubles me is a, somebody who, one of the seven people who has been given the authority and the mandate to-
Who was elected.
Elected to care for the futures of Almaral's children. And she's making a statement that is essentially not just turning a group of kids into them and not us, but also making them, you know, making them the equivalent of a heinous, a group that I don't think anyone that you speak to in Charlottesville would not disagree is a despicable institution. The KKK, the Ku Klux Klan. Horrible. And to even use the KKK in relation to a group of kids at a school that you are responsible for is-
Deplorable. It's deplorable. It's dangerous.
Yeah.
It's deplorable, it's dangerous, it's disgusting. It's disingenuous. Downright dirty.
And the statement mentions everything but Allison Spillman.
Why did Matthew Haas, the Berlin, the school board chair, and the vice chair not mention Allison Spillman in any regard in this statement? Why did they not say in this statement, "We don't stand with the comments of this person who chose to publish this commentary and this link with the Ku Klux Klan and Western Almaral High School students on her own? That's not who we are."
But it is. I think they fully align with what she said. Otherwise, you're right. They would have mentioned her at least once, but they don't. And a lot of this is, you call it word salad, but I see them trying to make points about the students in the school. A lot of this is, I mean, they talk about upholding equal access and non-discrimination policies. While that sounds like they're saying that they don't want to discriminate against one group or another, I secretly think they're saying that they don't want this group of students to discriminate against people like Allison Spillman's child. What they're really saying is-
We prioritize this child. We prioritize these folks.
Maintain a safe and respectful environment where differences in opinion. I mean, that's, without disruption or harm. I guess that's kind of directed at Allison Spillman's side, but-
Haas, Berlin, and a cuff. The superintendent, the chair, and the vice chair, by not saying what Spillman said was wrong in this word salad statement, have now become complicit and/or supportive of Spillman's initial statement where she links Western Almaral High School students to the Ku Klux Klan. This soap opera is becoming sopier and full of more craziness and full of more deplorable, disgusting behavior. All the statement had to be from Haas, the school board chair, and the vice chair was, "We don't believe what Spillman said is accurate. We don't stand for it. It's wrong. She did it on her own." And instead, they issued a word salad statement that seems to back her. And you, the parent of a student in Almaral County Public Schools, should be undoubtedly outraged. Comments coming in quicker than I can think of right now. Keep up right now. Print, radio, and television watching this program. The Daily Progress now has coverage of this. I would encourage the Richmond Times-Dispatch that is watching this show to cover this. I would encourage the Washington Post to cover this. And the story writes itself. Almaral County School Board Member who beat Dr. Meg Bryce in the most-watched school board race in American history has now, in her first year on the job, compared a student organization at one of the high schools that she represents to the Ku Klux Klan because they've utilized their right for free speech to invite a speaker to a lunchtime event that was, in the past, proven to be orderly and one rooted with peace. And the school board elected official Allison Spillman, who campaigned on a platform, she campaigned on this platform, of having a child transitioning gender utilized her mothering of this transitioning child as the inspiration of comparing this organization's choice to invite a speaker to that of the Ku Klux Klan. The story writes itself, Washington Post. The story writes itself, New York Times. And the story writes itself, Richmond Times-Dispatch. And for all the Spillman voters who are outraged right now, this is on your hands. Because anyone who read what she was about and what her campaign and platform are about had to realize there was a level of crazy present. Her campaign manager was creating fake websites to try to take down Meg Bryce. Remember? Spillman's campaign manager created a fake WordPress website to try to take down Meg Bryce, but screwed up by using the login and the password tied to his name. And then she had to distance himself, distance herself from him. You voters who supported Spillman made this bet. You disagree. You grimace. You disagree.
Yeah, I disagree.
You knew she was a-
Look, if we're going to blame everyone for every person they've ever voted for, we're all going to be guilty of, at the bare minimum stupidity.
People who elect people into office need to start realizing the people that they are electing, it's not just a popularity contest. It's not just about how the wind blows that day. It's not just about what's in vogue or what's woke today. These people serve four-year terms. They're driving a quarter-billion-dollar yearly budget. They're dictating the pace and tempo of thousands of futures. Anyone who actually was informed when voting in this school board race had to realize that this was a collateral damage shitstorm waiting to happen. Everyone realized that, that was informed or in tune. Put your hand in the air if you realize that something was loose here. That something was off here. You knew it, did you not?
Not necessarily with Allison Spillman herself.
She instructed her campaign manager to create a phony fake burner website to try to take down Meg Bryce. Are you telling me Spillman didn't know about that?
Are you telling me that you have direct knowledge of her telling him to create that?
Her campaign manager-
I know.
And one of the top fundraisers of her campaign, a law professor, created a burner website to try to destroy Meg Bryce's personal brand and her integrity and credibility. And this guy left backdoor clues and evidence tied to him. Anyone who does not think that Spillman was aware of that going on is not understanding smoke, there's fire. And again, I made the correlation yesterday. We got, I'm off-air today at 1:15 because I got a 1:30 meeting. I got 12 minutes left.
You could have made it for later.
Okay. I couldn't make it for later.
You could have.
Made what for later?
The meeting.
No, I could not. That's the only time the people that I'm meeting with could meet. And this deal supersedes this show, period.
That's fair.
Not even close. position we're in right now with this statement from the superintendent and the vice chair and the chair makes the Almaral County Public School system because it's the top educator, the superintendent, and it's the top two school board members, the chair and the vice chair. It now makes them complicit or compliant or in support of Spillman's KKK comments. Because none of their statements said, "I do not stand for what she said." So that tells you, parents of Almaral County Public School students, that your top educator and your top elected officials are now in support of what Spillman has done.
It's implicit support rather than explicit support.
Bingo. And any support when it's tied to the Ku Klux Klan is sickening. Whether explicit or implicit. The first thing you do when it's the Ku Klux Klan is, "I don't stand for this. She's wrong." Not word salad, ignore it. Period. Shame on Matt Haas. Who knows better?
No doubt.
Jason Noble, Judah, Spillman showed her character from day one. Philip Reese, the NBC 29 story never even mentioned how Spillman used KKK in her Facebook posts. I saw the NBC 29 story and I was appalled with the coverage. You think, I think you, the viewer and listener, watch the show because we cut through the crap and we talk about the stuff that's tough. That's why the show works. Judah, Spillman posted a link to the fake website on her Instagram page. Yes, she knew, Judah. Stacy Baker-Patty. Now it's up to Matt Haas and the school board chair and the vice chair. They got one crack at fixing this.
But we know they won't.
The next statement. Spillman effed it up when she issued the second statement by basically doubling down on her KKK comments. By basically saying, "That was on my personal Facebook page, man. My personal Facebook page is for me. Someone screenshotted it and put it out in the public. Wah 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 wah." Someone tattletold on me. Someone took my secret from the cafeteria in the lunchroom and told everyone in the school. That's what Allison Spillman was doing right there. Weak sauce. sauce. Hey, Ally, you post a comment on your personal Facebook page as an elected official, that is fair territory. You're an elected official. This is common sense. Now Haas and the chair and the vice chair, they have one more crack at this. And if they screw it up with statement number two, or at the next school board meeting, collateral damage worsens. And the Allison Spillman soap opera doesn't just go young and restless, but it goes nuclear.
I don't see them changing their stripes. I could be wrong, but...
Nine minutes left. I want to put a face to what the city is doing here. There's a deal in place to the tune of $6.2 million. Put slide one on screen if you can, so we can show the viewers and listeners, we broke this news. We've been alluding to this news all week long. For two weeks, we've been alluding to this news. Yesterday, we gave you the nitty-gritty. We'll talk specifics today. $6.2 million. First, I salute Hunter Craig for being an active driver of this deal. Active driver of this deal. Props to him. Kudos to him. Chest bumps, fist bumps to him. $6.2 million. You got it on screen?
Yeah.
Slide one. Look at the screen. Does anyone recognize this building? This building is next to the Days Inn and the Country Inn and Suites. 2,000 Holiday Drive. It's 27,000 square feet, 3.8-acre property. The city's got a $6.2 million deal in place. It's gonna go before council on Monday, who has to greenlight it. What's the next slide you have? Is it slide two?
Yeah.
Put slide two on screen. Is that with the red triangle where it's located?
Mm-hmm.
Look at slide two, right next to the bypass, right in the heart of the city, next to Whole Foods, next to the Rivanna Trail, off the downtown mall. What's the next slide you have?
Uh, five.
Slide five. This is a massive building. Put slide five. Is that the footprint, first floor?
Yeah.
Massive building. There's the first floor, architectural footprint. Look at slide five. Put slide six on. That's the second floor. Massive building. Do we have the lower level, the basement on there? Slide seven?
No.
What's the next slide we have? Slide nine?
Yeah.
Look at slide nine. Massive piece of property. Here's what's gonna happen. $6.2 million, city taxpayer dollars. We broke this news, been telling you about this for two weeks. Not reported elsewhere. Monday, city council's got to approve or greenlight the $6.2 million. If council does not greenlight the spend $6.2 million for this property that is the picture-perfect campus and shelter for about 200 to 240 people locally that are homeless, then council should be shamed. Should be shamed. It will forever be a part of their legacy if Juan Wade and his council do not greenlight this on Monday. I hope you hear that, Juan Wade. Not only do they have to approve the $6.2 million, they're gonna have to approve outfit and outfit money to make this from office building to shelter and campus. That's gonna be other millions of dollars as well. They should do that immediately. You don't greenlight a $6.2 million purchase and then stall the approval for the remodeling funds. If you do that, you're morons. You greenlight the $6.2 million purchase and you greenlight the remodeling funds at the same time, so momentum can happen. If you stall on the remodeling funds, but greenlight the purchase, you're morons. After the purchase is approved, let's knock on wood, council's done crazy stuff, but if the purchase is approved on Monday, ladies and gentlemen, if the purchase is approved on Monday, ladies and gentlemen, next thing council is gonna do is this. It should do this. It should bring the shelter ordinance back. The ordinance that prevents people from camping downtown or in commercial spaces. And it's gonna be returned as a topic point to the agenda, because now there's a shelter where the 200 to 240 people can be shifted to. Previously, the shelter ordinance where there's no camping on the downtown mall, we'll give you 14 days heads-up. If you're camping on the downtown mall, we'll come to you on a Monday and say, "You have 14 days from us notifying you that you can't camp on the mall anymore. And if you have no place to store your belongings, we'll store them for free for you for 60 days." That's literally what the ordinance said. The most empathetic and kind ordinance ever created. 14 days heads-up, we'll store your stuff for 60 days after the 14 days expires. The activists in this community that use dog whistles, the activists in this community that leverage the homeless to create influence and cloud over council, the activists in this community that use social media and digital organization tactics to scare and spook council, said, "You're criminalizing the homeless. Where are you gonna put them? You can't kick them off the downtown mall and the storefronts of the locally owned and operated businesses. You can't do it. You've got nowhere to put them. Now you do." Now you bring the shelter ordinance back and say, "We have a campus that's 27,000 square feet, that has beds and showers, resume building, laundry, computer labs, addiction counseling, alcohol counseling, drug counseling, anything that you need to transition from being houseless into society, professional society, we can put here." And if the Gilligan gang and if the activists in this community continue to use the dog whistles and use the outrage to spook and scare council, then we have to call them out and say, "What you're doing is wrong. All you're doing is playing Monday morning quarterback with people's lives in our community through dog whistle tactics." You disagree?
No.
With this building here, put slide one on screen. With this building here, a Jeffersonian brick, almost Georgian-esque structure, that's 27,000 square feet. With this building, is this not something special? I'm gonna see Conan Owen, Sir Speedy of Central Virginia later today. Locally owned and operated Conan Owen, Sir Speedy of Central Virginia. Does the signage on our storefront, updated it yesterday. He's got the banner behind me, Sir Speedy of Central Virginia. Got a check for his work in my hand right now. Great work from Conan Owen and Sir Speedy of Central Virginia. Gonna give him some money. Got more work for him. Going to a site where he's doing another install for us. Sir Speedy of Central Virginia, who you call for any logo application, marketing collateral needs that you need. Direct mail, signage, decals, you name it. So much to cover. I could spend two hours talking on this show every day. We have office for rent. We just put a fantastic tenant, Oak Valley Custom Hardscapes, into some of the most beautiful office space in downtown Charlottesville. Oak Valley Custom Hardscapes, Judah. Any hardscape need that you may have, Oak Valley Custom Hardscapes is who you call. Anything yard-related, house-related, pool-related, home-related, custom hardscapes, a strategic plan, local, their office is downtown, Oak Valley Custom Hardscapes is who you call for anything hardscape-related. This weekend is a weekend of reflection for Matthew Haas, the school board, and Allison Spillman. And let's see, after a weekend of reflection, if Allison Spillman does the right thing. And the right thing is resignation. It's resignation. That's how you heal and overcome this situation. Someone I trust, "On the topic of the shelter, you can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good," John Blair said. If this is Sam Sanders' recommendation, then people need to support this. The focus should be on this. If this proposal assists potential clients. John Blair, good man. Love when he watches and listens to the show. All right. That's all she wrote. "My name is Jerry Miller. It's the watercooler of content and conversation in Charlottesville and Central Virginia. We cut through the noise and we just tell it how we think it is. We don't use word salad. We don't beat around the bush. We understand the significance of our words." It's just real. For Judah Wickhauer, I'm Jerry Miller.